Okay, here we go.
I'd like to call the meeting, regular scheduled meeting of the Library Board of Trustees for the Palm Springs Public Library. The date is Cinco de Mayo and the time is 5:33. Happy Cinco de Mayo. I hope everyone has that margarita that I can't see. I hope they do. Jeannie, can you go over the acceptance of the agenda for us? And I'm sorry, roll call, excuse me.
Sure. Craig Barba?
Here.
Melissa Cronin isn't here yet. Nina Garner?
Here.
David Kelly?
Here.
Ed McBride?
Present.
And the agenda was posted on or before April 28th.
Thank you. Now with the time we have set aside for public comment, do we have anyone on the call from the public who would like to make a comment?
We do have someone on the line. Do you want to make a comment? Are you just here to observe? Last month it was just an observation.
So without a no?
That's a no. I haven't seen any. Haven't seen anything in the chat and I don't have any, I didn't have any phone calls or emails.
Alright. So may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please?
I'll move.
All in favor of accepting the agenda, please do a roll call, Jeannie.
Craig Barba?
Yes.
Want Nina Garner?
Yeah.
David Kelly?
Yes.
And McBride?
Yes.
Thank you. Ask 4-0.
Thank you. Did you say that Nancy's here?
Yes.
Nancy, would you like to give us a report on the Friends of the Palm Springs Library?
She sometimes has to.
She's on mute.
From work and stuff, so. Let me ask her to unmute. I wonder, that's another thing. I do know that the Friends had their annual meeting and it was a wonderful program. I know, I'm stealing thunder. See if she can, if she's busy, let me text her real quick. So the, I'll tell you the Friends book sale area is open.
I know, I heard you. I was driving and I couldn't get off mute while I was driving, so I pulled over. So yes, excellent. We had our annual meeting on Sunday, the 25th. It was very nice. We had Wade Ralph speak. I don't know if any of you know of him, but he actually writes as, what is his name?
It's Viola Shipman.
And so he writes as his, that was his grandmother's name, and he just gave a very entertaining talk. He was just great. Everybody, all the feedback from everybody who attended was wonderful. So, but I do hope that this is our first and last Zoom meeting, but it went off really well and it was really easy because we didn't rent chairs or food or drink or anything. But it also was much smaller, so I really hope we're back to normal next year. And as for our meeting last month, it basically was all about the annual meeting, so we really don't have anything new to report. I think that's about it. We're just very, very excited that the library opened today.
Yes.
And I think the Friends, the Friends book sale area is open and available for purchase.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, Nancy, when's your next meeting?
It's the second Tuesday, so it's next Tuesday.
Two o'clock.
Tuesday coming up at two o'clock.
And Craig, I can send you the invite if you want.
Yes, if you could please do that. Thank you.
And for the Friends meetings, we use the same Zoom code every, every month.
Nancy, it was a great meeting. I really enjoyed it.
Oh, did you attend?
Oh yeah, I was there.
Oh good.
Yeah, he was great.
Yeah, I thought he was too. I was very surprised because some authors now are, they write well, but they don't talk as well, but I thought he was very entertaining.
He was very entertaining.
Yeah, that's good.
He was trying to be, he was trying to make the genealogy so he could be related to Jeannie, I know, because they're both from Missouri.
We, we are.
I thought he made that connection between the two of them. They're like, oh, we're the only two from Missouri. And I guess that southern Missouri is the important part too, right, Jeannie?
There is a difference in south.
Yeah, oh, I heard you say that. It's like, oh, who knew?
Northern Missouri, it's, it's even different topography. It's very flat in the northern part of the state and it's Ozark Hills in the south.
Good meeting, good report. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Resume your journey.
Okay, I will.
I can't see Jeannie as David here.
No, he's not. So do you want to report for the foundation? I'm sorry, I couldn't attend their meeting.
Yeah, I'm looking at the minutes. Just basically, let's see, they have, they're continuing to send $2,000 a month to the trustees to, towards the loan balance. So Jeannie, I'm assuming that you're showing that and turning that in as it happens.
Yes.
They are looking at right now, a use of funds recommendation, so basically an investment policy and how they're going to invest their money. So the Finance Committee is continuing to work on that. The fundraising committee continues to get organized around their new online system that manages donors. I know they went through training and they cleaned up a bunch of things and so they have now the ability to launch campaigns and do email campaigns and take donations through credit cards and that sort of thing. The Foundation Board is actively seeking new members. So if you know of anybody who's interested, if you can, you can send them over to David Sidley. He's on that membership board as I am, to even send them to me if you wish. And it was of course announced the donation that was received from the Zayn J. Tomas bequest that the Foundation received this past year, so they were very, very excited about that announcement. And I guess one last thing is that they are beginning to revamp and revitalize the Public Relations Group and start finding ways to promote the library and the Library Foundation, the work they're doing. So I think that's, that covers about everything that I see in the minutes, so. Any questions for me that I can try to answer?
Actually, I did. Thanks. I think when we do the Treasurer's Report, we'll see that the balance on the loan hasn't changed. So how much has been paid to the library at this point?
I think about $4,000.
Well, we, we just got another check, so I think $6,000.
$6,000, okay.
Yeah, and we're, we, it's tricky because these are, this is from the end of March and now it's May, so the financials get lagged a little bit, but yeah, that notes receivable should go down. $6,000. I have a February, a March, and an April. We received $2,000 for each one.
Well, we'll pull up the Treasurer's Report shortly. Thanks.
Sure. Any other questions? That's it for me. So Jeannie?
Hi. I might have been on KMR and didn't even get to see it, but we, the library is open.
Wonderful.
Yay. We have, today was our first day. We open our temporary library hours are Monday through Thursday, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., and then Friday and Saturday, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. And once we fill some of our vacant positions, we'll return to our regular hours, which were Tuesdays and Wednesdays, we were open until 8 p.m. But right now, we're just keeping the temporary hours because we are short. We're down four people altogether and it makes it difficult to run the library. So very excited. We had a wonderful day. We're still open right now for another 15 minutes. The door count right before this meeting was about 200 people for the first day. So that was very good. It wasn't a big cluster all at once. It was very steady, smooth opening. Had about 10 people come in when we first opened. And so it's been very steady throughout the day. Everybody's so happy. It's really fun to see. Kids are happy. They're just like, oh, the stuff, I can't believe it. And, and even, that's what the adults look like too. They're like, oh, all the stuff. So it's really nice for people to be able to come in and browse again and use the computers and get the help that they need. We have requested to turn on and reactivate our, as a passport acceptance agency. So we are not currently accepting passport applications, but we have requested to turn that on with the State Department. It takes about a month for them to reactivate us, so stand by for more information on that. We'll, we'll make an announcement when we're, when we're live again on, as a passport agency. We're still continuing the library agogo service, so if you don't want to come inside, for whatever reason, whether you just don't want to come inside or you're busy and you want to just utilize the service, we're still going to keep the library agogo service. So feel free to continue to use that. During the month of April, we had 1,464 appointments. So that, I'm very pleased with that. Everybody's been really happy with that service too. We do have the mobile hotspots ready and available for checkout and we have 20 of those. And so customers can reserve and, or just come in and check out the hotspots for two, a two-week period. We are continuing with our online virtual programs through our YouTube channel. And just be sure to search Palm Springs Public Library to find the videos. This month, children can do a birdhouse kit. We have a birdhouse kit for pickup. And the teen kit was a dino dig, but we have already run out of kits. So sorry teens, there are no more kits. The youth and teen programs are going to go dark after May 13th activity, so, so we can prepare for summer reading. Just know about that. We won't have any programming on the last two weeks of May. Our adult program is a t-shirt tote bag video and that premieres tomorrow. There's no kit associated with that. You can just upcycle an old t-shirt, follow along and make your own tote bag. Next month, the summer reading, can you believe it? It's all, it's time for summer reading. It happens in June and July. And our program will be entirely online. Again, this year, we're using the app called Beanstack. And you can find a link or get information off of our website, library.org. Everyone who participates can earn badges and entry tickets to win grand prizes by reading and tracking your minutes read. And then we'll have weekly videos and craft kits for kids and teens. And adults will have a variety of programs, whether it's a video or sometimes there might be a kit to go along with the program. So we're going to give away books again for the children when they register, children and teens, even adults too, I think they get a book. When they sign up, they'll get a free book. And then if children and teens, I think, well, we got to talk about that for adults too, what they're going to get. The children and teens get a book pack if they meet the reading goal of the, the number of minutes read. And last year, we had a contest, which school read the most minutes and
That's right.
Sponsored a $500 prize and it went to Catherine Finchey Elementary School last year, so maybe we should do that again, Nancy. I think that might be fun. We could see which school's going to read the most. And it was competitive. I mean, those kids, a lot of kids in a lot of schools read a lot of minutes. So we'll see what happens this year. So get those brain cells ready for something. And I was speaking of summer reading, I do want to mention that the Sustainability Commission agreed to sponsor our bicycle grand prizes this year. So thank you to Sustainability Commission. They're, they're donating $500 toward bicycles for us to use as grand prizes. So that's really nice of them.
Very nice.
Yeah, and that is my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Jeannie?
I have two questions. The mobile hotspots will be ongoing, isn't that correct?
Yes, we have, we got a grant that will fund them for a year. So I expect that we could probably seek out additional funding for that for the next year or.
And a year cost us how much?
It was about, it was $10,000 for the grant.
Okay. And then presently, how many people will be allowed in the library at the same time?
Oh, that's an excellent question. Right now, we are doing a 50% capacity, which is 50 people. We did not see that at all today. So like I said, when we first opened, we saw 10, so 50 at one time. We're recommending that people spend no more than an hour in the library. If somebody needs to stay longer, we're not, we're not going to restrict that, but yeah, we're just recommending that people not, not linger. You know, do your work, get your work and, and then proceed out to let other people in. We, libraries fall under the retail category, so right now retail is allowed to be at 100%, but I felt like we should, we should step into this a little cautiously. So we're going to do a 50% capacity, 50 people, that's a lot. And I don't, I, the only time we really saw that many people here in the library was when we were doing a program anyway, so. I don't think we're going to have a capacity problem with that.
Thank you.
Are you at full staff?
Well, we're four, we're short for, we have four vacancies right now.
How many hours are those four vacancies? Are they all full-time people?
No, it's 2.25 FTE.
Jeannie, did you have any problems with people not wanting to wear a mask? Was that even an issue? Did you, are people behaving? I'm worried.
Mostly people are behaving. We had a couple of instances and one scenario, I handed a mask to someone and then they put it right on and, and then we had some confrontation a little bit for, but out of the 200, I, three maybe? So a very high percentage of people being very supportive of wearing their masks. Because we want to protect everybody in the life, us, children. Children aren't vaccinated. You know, there's, there's a huge population of children in our community that don't even have the ability to get a vaccine yet, so we want to protect everybody.
Good. Thank you. Any more questions for Jeannie or comments? Thank you. Treasurer Kelly, you're, you're up for your report.
Jeannie, can you bring up page eight? Okay, so you can see here, the current, that cash balance is $1,807,222.34. Can go a little further down to page 10. We have, I guess continuing issues with the Friends of the Library account here. As well as, I don't know exactly what the trust fund books are. Maybe if you could remind me of that, because it's not the Croppets or Trust Donation.
What we do, what we've done with the, the Croppets or Fund, when you approve the money for Croppets or, we transfer that into the trust fund books and we've been spending it through that account. So any book purchases go through this singular account called Trust Fund Books.
And we approved how much for trust fund books for the, from the Croppets or Fund?
You had approved 5,000 originally and then another 5,000. I'll tell you, I don't think the second 5,000 is reflected on here because I just did the transfer request this week, so. You'll see another 5,000 subtracted from Croppets or, so it'll be down to 206.
Right, but why is it expenditure for, the expenditure, the second column, period expenditures, 15,000?
Out of trust fund books, well, you also authorized money for DVDs this year.
I see.
Which was 25 or 25,000, I believe?
So it's a, it's a bit of everything there.
Right.
Okay. Hard to look at that. I, I suppose if I went back, I would see the, the five and the, then the other five coming out of the Croppets or Trust Donation, because it seems like it's just rather flat here for the 211, 665, even though there was $15,000 coming up for trust fund books. It would seem to me that there would probably be simultaneous transactions at that point.
You approved 5,000 from Croppets or first, so we took 5,000 out of Croppets or, and then you approved the amount, I don't know, I'll find it. The amount for other books, DVDs and at least I do now, off the top of your head.
I don't know the exact amount, but there was also 10,000 for ebooks.
Okay, hold on. 20,000 for DVDs. 5,000 for nonfiction out of Croppets or. So the, the 20,000, and then if there was a 10,000 for ebooks, that was, that was back in ancient or something, that, that comes out of future library projects funding. Because the Croppets are only authorized for nonfiction books in English.
Okay, and then the Friends of the Library, is this a number that's already been fixed or I see it has an asterisk next to it in the, like, fifth column or something like that? It looks like that means it's fixed.
I, it's, I, it's worse. I, I requested that it got fixed and it got doubly worse, I think because, yeah, I, I've got to get that fixed too. It needs to be zero, zero, zero. Oh, my God. Look at it, we'll get that fixed.
Let's see, I'm trying to figure out, it's the, let's go back to page eight. I think it might be on page eight or I might have to go to page nine. Yes, no, it's on page eight. So note, page eight shows notes receivable of 80,000. And that's all the foundation notes, so that really should have been reduced at least by $2,000 if there was something reduced in February. But we don't have February, March, or April's payment here.
No, we're waiting on the Finance Department. They're, they're down a million employees. I don't even know, but they're really behind. The money is in your cash account. So you don't have to worry about losing interest on it. The money is in your account. It just didn't get transferred down into that line item to subtract from your notes receivable.
Okay, well, if it's in our cash account, it must be in the phantom cash account, because when I try to reconcile cash here, I don't see that cash there. So I don't, I, if you're saying that the accounting department hasn't updated notes receivable, I would say that they probably have an updated cash either.
No, they, they sent us a receipt. When we send a check, they send us a receipt, receipt, and we have receipts.
But you, me must understand that when I'm sitting here and like, looking at the past cash balance and comparing it to the current cash balance and then I talk, you know, and then I take four adjustments that I'm seeing on this statement, that I don't see this, I don't see any adjustments for for those receipt of payments for, for the cash. I mean, I don't expect to receive a lot of interest from $6,000 in cash, from three $2,000 payments from the foundation. But I don't, I don't see how that cash is in this cash balance based on the outflows and inflows.
See if I can pull up the report. That doesn't help you. I'll have to, let me see if I can, one more time. I'll have to get you the report, but I can get you the detail.
Okay, that'd be helpful. And then the, my last request is that I think in the past, when we had a discussion about charitable donations, I made a request that we would actually get a report that shows those inflows. And I know in the minutes, it said that we had received a couple of payments from, from donations, one being from a a sorority, Alpha Delta Kappa, and another one from Ann Rogers Rhine and Richard Rhine. But I don't know, I, I thought that I would find that on a report that showed donations, but apparently we're not seeing those donation reports, so. I can't remember what page that would have been, because we had seen it one time before and I don't recall whether or not you decided to include it in that package, or it was because we were actually looking at it on your screen.
No, I, I remember that. I, I, I don't know if I overlooked that, that I should have done that. I, because it was something new and unusual and we don't get donations very often. When they're, when they show, I'll definitely include it. And I can get that to you also.
Okay. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Treasurer Kelly?
I'm wondering if they, I was looking to see if it was on that account and I know that. But it is not. Okay.
So you'll follow up with that, Jeannie?
Yeah.
And also the report showing the payments by the foundation?
Yes, I'm ready, yes.
And you're, under the impression that we should have $6,000 from them, is that correct?
$8,000, I think.
You know, six. February check. April check. I know there's a March check. March. I'm keeping copies. So you have a, you have a February check, March and April.
May coming up.
Yeah, and then we get a receipt. This one, I specifically have the one for February. So I know, so. You have three checks for $6,000. I'm keeping, I'm keeping them because I want this to be completely accurate. So I don't need to keep copies, but I, you know.
Thank you.
And as I'm sure, I'm sure the foundation is too.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, let's move along to section seven, discussion items. And the first one is my report on Measure J. I'd like to start out, I, I think I shared everything that I received at that meeting with all of you. I'd like to start out, I, I think I shared everything that I received at that meeting with all of you, right after that meeting. And um, a cou- I, I guess a couple of things I'd like to share with you all. Having been involved in the process prior to everything being shut down in Measure J funds, what we thought were totally lost. Uh, and keeping up with that, you know, to the penny, to make sure that uh, everything. And and some of you may recall Measure J giving us a visit and saying, you've got six hundred thousand dollars, we want you to spend it. And we went through a whole process of identifying how to spend that money. You know, I thought all was lost when we heard that the money had gone away. Um, and just in, in passing, I had reassurance from uh, then Mayor Coors. I had reassurance from uh, Councilmember Woods. Um, and Councilmember Holstich that they were gonna forget us. And then um, former city manager Ready said, we're not gonna forget you guys as soon as everything gets back to normal. You know, the library will be there. So my fingers were crossed and I was trying to live a good life, so uh, that it all happened. So going to the meeting, um, of course, this meeting was uh primarily discussion about uh, current projects. That continued even after COVID shutdown, because they were in place and in motion. So there was a lot of reporting on what's going on there, uh, but then attention had turned to uh, future budgets. And resurrecting and what's gonna happen now that, you know, funding uh, for the city looks encouraging in terms of the Measure J. So uh, that was great. Um, I was, I was there till the bitter end and listened to the discussion on all the projects. Not just the library, um, but the, the good news is that um, the, the. And by the way, the money was always spread out over several fiscal years. It wasn't just a clump of money given to us for the main library. And if you also recall, where we kind of left this was, um, the next step was we were gonna get money to um, hire. Planning consultant and start getting the process started, right, for planning what we're going to do next. Um, and then in the middle of all of that, we had um, trustee Wemmerick came back and said, why don't we redo the Frye building? You know, let's use some of that money to create a meeting space uh, for the community. So we had a lot of things going on, and then one day, as we all know, it just came to a screeching halt. Um, I will tell you, as I've, I've reported back to Jeannie since she was unable to attend. Some of that history has been lost, just to be honest. You know, there's not, no one seemed to recall that conversation about the six hundred thousand dollars and how we, uh, how that money was allocated. For projects immediately, um, but that's understandable. So you know, I, I, and I wasn't asked to talk about that. But um, the, the good news is that as you can see from their budget request, over the next two fiscal years. There's five hundred and eighty thousand dollars that has been set aside for the Frye building to uh, remodel and redo that. And as you guys have heard, the foundation is interested in also partnering to raise money for that building. So I think that that's gonna be uh, an amazing project once it gets started. And then uh, starting in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, there uh, is two million. Then the next fiscal year, four million, and the next fiscal year, another four million, for a total of ten million dollars. That is being put aside for uh, the main library project, whatever that is to be determined. And uh, of course, they don't go beyond that, but I do recall uh, before everything stopped. That there's at least two more fiscal years where there's money uh, put aside for the library. Cause they were talking one night, the last time I was at a Measure J, and Jeannie, please correct me. But you know, they were looking well beyond this project being, at that time, they were talking about a five-year project where money every year would go towards this. So um, it looks like that's being resurrected and is going to, you know, go back into the um, the budget. And the good news is that we're in the same priority that we were when it was shut down, so nothing changed. They didn't drop us down, they didn't raise us up, but they didn't drop us down, and we're like number three behind some projects. That are uh, very critical to the city and the parks, and some of the departments that are needing some immediate, um, I think, remodels and some help. So I guess the good news is that um, there's going to be money. Now, the, the, the rest of the news is that the Measure J Commission was very clear about this. Uh, they tried to get me pulled into the meeting a couple of times, but I, I never raised my hand, or I never turned on my video. Cause I really, I didn't wanna step out of line, but um, they were asking that the library prepare a plan. On how they want to proceed with this money and where we are with our project planning. And Jeannie should be prepared to go before Measure J in September. Um, as they finalize this, this budget, so that they can make sure that there's enough money for what we want. Um, and to be updated on the, the plans. We never really got that far. We only, the, the last time we ever spoke to them, where I did, was really about the general, the. The initial six hundred thousand dollars, but they now want to know, um, are, are we still on? And do we still have hopes of doing something for the main library? So I've shared that with Jeannie and suggested that, of course, she get with the new city manager. Because this, of course, all these things occurred on Dr. Ready's watch, so things could change. She has a new boss, you know, a new city hall, um, and that they probably need to um, bring him up to speed. And have a discussion about what, as a department, they see happening there, so that the rest of us can march behind them and get behind them and support it. Uh, but the deadline, and I don't know, Jeannie, if you've heard from them or not, but I, I would expect an invitation anytime now. Where they're going to say, we'd like for you to come and speak before us and, and talk to us about the plans for the main library. So I will stop there and see if you want to ask any questions for me.
That's good news, Ed. Thank you. Really appreciate hearing that.
Yeah, I thought it was great news. Um, it, it was like Christmas morning, now what do we do, right? So um, we got a lot of planning to do, but you know, just get, get it back on track. So, I mean, Jeannie, what do you think? You have time to think about it?
It's wonderful. It's great, great to hear that, that they're keeping us in their priority list. I, I, I think that's a big plan. I, I'm excited.
Yeah. So I would say to any of you with, you know, if you see any of the city council or any of the Measure J. There was some, there, there's a lot of familiar faces in Measure J. Um, you, you guys may recall uh, Commissioner Soto was on the building committee with us. Uh, she's still on Measure J, so she was very up to speed and remembered all of our discussions about the main library projects. That was very helpful. Uh, former trustee, um, Linda Futterer, she's, she's been appointed. So of course, she was the one kept saying, where's the library? I know Ed's here somewhere, answer this question. Um, and uh, talked to us, and the group said, no, really, it's not appropriate at this point. We rather prefer that, you know, Jeannie come and talk to us. She's on there, which is gonna be very helpful to us too, because she, she has so much history about the project and what we wanna do. Um, Jeffrey Bernstein, you guys, some of you may know Jeffrey, uh, very active in the chamber and also uh, Main Street. Uh, and loves the library as well. So we have a lot of fans on Measure J. So I, I, I'm not saying it's a slam dunk, I just think that we've got people there in place that are just familiar enough and love the library. Know what we've been through, and I think all in favor of something coming our way. Anything else for me? Okay, thank you. Um, Treasurer Kelly, uh, we have back here, coming back to the great report that you filed for us. And picking up where we kind of left off our discussion last time, um, about uh, drafting a. Um, an investment policy and where we go from here, based on the analysis and the really great work that you did on the trust fund. Would you like to pick that up and have some discussion with us?
I think it'd be useful if um, Jeannie could actually pull up for me the um, minutes from the last meeting. As it, where it left, where it described what the next steps were as far as that discussion was concerned. Okay. So, um, just reading from this. The board should take what they've learned from Treasurer Kelly and start opening up the discussion on the next agenda. Decide if the whole group will work on this or a small group. Trustee Borba said it might be helpful to see the investment policies from other nonprofits. He also said the board might want to look at how much of the fund we would want liquid and how much we want to be invested. He says he feels our current investments are too conservative. President McBride asked if the city might have objections that trustees taking the trust fund out. Director Kay said in the past trustees have been more involved in the investments that were made with the trust fund under the city's umbrella. President McBride suggests a joint meeting between the trustees, the foundations, the friends of the library. To discuss goals and objectives, he will reach out to the other groups to see about scheduling a meeting. President McBride asked Director Kay to add initial discussion on how to move forward with drafting investment policy and identifying the roles and responsibilities. Of the trustees when it comes to the policy to the next agenda. So I probably would just go through that uh, as president. Trustee McBride and just kind of uh, pick and choose which ones you wanna tackle first.
True. So, um, trustee Borba actually uh, shared with me earlier this week. Or into last week program, sorry, which one, um, he discovered um, another organization's investment policy. We didn't have enough time to get it out to everyone, but I think we need to send it out and, and as it, it's a great example of what another organization has done. Um, and start thinking about that. I, I think um, based on, again, the, the great work that you've done here. And is it time for us to just maybe do a round robin and talk about, you know, how we feel about approaching the city? And, and taking this on and um, what the, the next steps might be. Um, I, I, does anyone have thought about this, have any feelings about it? Or wanna share with them what they've been thinking about?
Um, first of all, I, I'd like to just let you know that I have no experience in finance whatsoever. So I'm just maybe asking a little, some questions, uh, really not. I don't know that I have an opinion yet, um, but I was wondering um, if uh. Our, if that money comes out from the city, the city managing it, so now it's a smaller amount of money. Um, is that going to affect um, the amount of interest we get back? Do we get more if it's combined with other accounts or, or is everything, um, or are those accounts kept so separate? That we know exactly how much money our money need? Or is it the total amount of money made so much money, and then it's just split up? I don't know how that works. Maybe if somebody could explain to me how that, how investments are made with city money. And, and how the, the um, the earnings are, are distributed.
Trustee Kelly, you wanna give that a shot?
Well, actually, it'd be very interesting to hear one of the other ones try to give a shot with that one. Because while you've got me here to correct you, um, that might be a good opportunity.
That teaches how to fish, right? So it would be my understanding that if we as a group or a board went to the city and said that. We would like to explore removing uh, either all or a portion of the trust fund. And put it into our own investment tools and in our own investment area. That would be one discussion we'd have to have, and, and you know, the logistics and how that's gonna work. And you know, I, I, I really don't know if it requires certain approvals, or you know, I think that would, there would have to be some probably investigation. From everybody involved. Um, then I would imagine that if we decided to leave funds there, it's probably gonna be just as it's always been. Uh, it would, I, I don't think it would change the way they handle our money, and it would be kept in a separate account. However, I guess that we could, you know, specify as part of that arrangement, that we could say to them, the money that we have left. We wanna be more active in how it's invested and how it is managed by the city. We could do all at once. I, I can't, I think if we're gonna open this up, we might as well open it up for everything we possibly could want from this. That's, that's my opinion from what I've learned since I've been on this board.
Um, I, I don't see us uh, managing the money on a daily basis. None of us have the time nor the training or experience. But uh, with other foundations that I've been a part of, they have a, a company do it. It could be the community fund. Uh, their return this year was pretty good. They were about eight or nine percent. Uh, Mycel has their money in the community fund with some direction not to be an international stock. Uh, the resolution that I brought you as a copy, it was from the uh, Regional Access Project. It's a six-page document, it's their policies and procedures. Right now, um, the RAP has their money with Wells Fargo and the community fund. They've split the money between the two. They've made a policy on how much that they wanna have liquid. The rest of it is invested, and they're also getting a good return on their money. The concern I have is with the, the city, it seems like it's invested in money market. Uh, which is very, very secure, but the, the issue is I think you're getting anywhere from a half a percent to two percent. Uh, in a return, and so we're, our money is drastically dwindling. Uh, it's not keeping up with the cost of living.
Wonder, does that, does that help in any way?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, so, once we uh, address the city and let them know that this is something we're thinking about doing. Then it's just about exploring that possibility, right? Nothing is going to change, like, the way the money is now. We're going to explore the possibility, and then at that point, once we've looked into it and made a decision. That it's, maybe it's better for us to pool our money, then we go back to the city and say we've decided to take the money. Or, or we've decided to leave it where it's at, whatever, whatever the outcome is. Um, right? Nothing is going to change immediately. We're going to have time to, to research it. Or, and to, and to make a decision. But we have to get permission initially from the city to even explore the possibility?
Yeah, I, I don't know if permission is the right word. I think it's, um, I, I think that it's expressing our interest. In doing this and finding out how we would go about doing it. I, I don't, I don't think we necessarily have their permission. I can only speak from, since I've been involved in this discussion in previous boards. We have never gone this far, by the way. Um, we would usually get to the point to where we look around the room and people would say. I don't know if I'm qualified to be responsible for, you know, decisions to manage two million dollars. I, I'm, I'm being totally transparent with the discussions that occurred in previous boards. And so it kind of stopped right there, right? But during that time, you know, the city had never sent us messages, say, oh no, you can't do that. I think they just kind of said, you need to come talk to us about it when you're, when you're ready. So I've always made that assumption. Now, that's a su- an assumption on my part. Um, Treasurer Kelly and, and maybe even Jeannie may know more about that than I do, and, and I would urge them to say something. But I, I think it's more of uh, when we go sit with them, I think we just need to have some sort of an idea of what kind of plan we want to do. You know, how we'd wanna go about it, and how would we, how would we go about it? And um, and, and be prepared for them to say, sure, you know, you just come back and tell us when you wanna take the money out. And where you wanna put it, or they may say, well, you know, it's, things have changed, and maybe they may look at this a little bit differently. I, I, I'm, the only real concern I have is that I've heard it referenced, and maybe it was through Jeannie. Or maybe it was just through a passing conversation with someone on city council, that the view that this, the trust fund is considered public money. And as a former public servant, whenever I hear that, that tells me there are restrictions, you know, around that. So I, I, I don't know what that means, but um, whenever I hear someone say, oh, that's public money. I don't think that they're going to be very, I don't, I'm not gonna say that. I, I don't know how easy it might be for us to take public money and go off and do something privately, if that makes sense. Um, but I, that, that's, that's Ed's question mark in this process. Is that if it's considered public money now, does that mean that, you know, it's like taking, us asking, oh, give us that four million. Measure J money, and we wanna go take it and put it in Wells Fargo. We know that will never happen, right? That's just an, an impossible request, but um, yeah, I don't know if I'm answering your question or not. But that, that is one of my concerns about if we decided to move forward with this.
Um, Jeannie and Ed, uh, when someone has the time in it with your approval, of course, Ed. Me and Ed, when someone has the time in it with your approval, of course, Ed, that we can have this example. Go out. Investment policy, just so people can see the scope.
Absolutely.
I think it would help people understand that this is obviously not a simple process. But it's a doable process.
Yeah, I definitely will include it in the next packet.
Jenny, can you send it out sooner than that so people can?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, I could do that as an email, but for official. You know, transparency, we want to put it in the packet.
Now, I need to tell you about the rap. Rap is money that comes from tax dollars in this in Riverside County. But that's where the money is generated from, so it is quasi governmental, quasi. What we're not governmental is. And they're operating with an annual budget of a million dollars with they have. Probably a net value of probably around eight million dollars because they asked four years ago purchased a building. With their with the money that they have access to. They also have money invested in a variety of things in case we have a a down tour in economy. But this money is generated from the Costco complex in. In Palm Desert, and so we see about 1.2 million dollars a year come from that so that we distribute to nonprofits.
Craig, that's a a public organization, right? So their minute and all of their documents are public.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure I wasn't sharing something that was.
Yeah.
Private.
I mean, I also can share, I'm on the Rotary Foundation. Board here locally and and we have a similar document as well, so I'm I can. Certainly share that if you guys would like to look at another organization and how they manage. And the way that works is that there's an international Rotary Foundation and then there's a local Rotary Foundation and they're. They're separate from one another. And a local group manages the the Palm Springs Rotary Foundation, whereas of course, an international group manages the larger amount. So it's and they. So that might be something I I'll I'll get my hands on that tomorrow. And send it to you, Jenny, and maybe you can show that as an example, too.
And are you aware of where the Rotary is has their funds?
Oh, yeah, as a matter of fact, are the I say our, the the Palm Springs Foundation is. They have some of it with Wells Fargo and they have the rest of it with the foundation, the the community fund. Which is, of course, the much larger, what, national?
Right.
Organization that helps foundations, public foundations manage their money.
Oh, that's very similar to what wraps done.
Yeah. And and very pleased with the partnership. I mean, they this year. They made a lot of money even in hard times that they're now able to give a lot of grants out. As a matter of fact, the library foundation is getting a grant from them this year. So, you know, it's they they're, it's all about giving back to the community. So they made a lot of money. For the size amount they had, so they're giving it away. Well, I'll get my hands on that tonight and send it over to Jeannie. So we we can get these documents and look at them. I think the time is coming where we. We were very fortunate that we we've had. Trustee Kelly do all this legwork for us. And I think that we probably have an idea of what we need to do to do this on our own. I think that we need to then have a discussion about, do we want to do this? And if so, then start mapping out the next steps that we need to prepare to approach. The city and start having discussions with them about what we want to do or what we're thinking about doing. Because I I think definitely we're going into this much more wide-eyed than we ever have in previous discussions. And I think looking at the responsibility that some of these. Sample investment policies will show us will also give us more information about. What we're signing up to do, because we're going to find that in some ways, you know. And I think that's very important about what is our own personal responsibility. I know, I don't know about you guys, but when I've been appointed to this group, I was asked, you know that you're supposed to manage the trust fund, yes. And we've always done that in some way. But it's been very much like we we've been doing. Always Jeannie comes to us, we see the report every year. She says, I need this amount of money from the trust fund. We approve it or we modify it. And off we go for another year, right? Unless there's an emergency. I think that we're well going to be on that. It's going to be, I think, you know, much more oversight into how the money. Is managed and are we ready to sign up for that?
Well, I I think it's super exciting and the report that David gave to us the last time just. Really got me thinking about a lot of things and and I think that being. You know, if we're going to be part of this this group, we need to be more. Involved in what happens to that money because it's money that's going to. Move the library forward and I I. I really want our library to be redone, remodeled, whatever it is. It's been way too long. I'm just because I'm not a finance person, I'm I'm afraid, you know, of of making a mistake. So, I mean, I'm worried, but I'm not worried enough that I would say, no, let's not do this, you know. I I am, I I'm sure that I can, you know, get my questions answered and and have your guidance. I'm all in. I'm I'm in for this. I think this would be great. And obviously, I need to learn a little bit more and do a little more homework, but. But I think it's a great idea and I'm excited about it.
And I think with the right guidance and the right people to help us will all learn. You know, it's it's not, I I think we're all going to learn from this, so. I mean, it's saying, Craig, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I would I like us to to move ahead. David, what do you think our total income was from interest this year?
Oh, this year? Well, it's been adjusted. It's probably about eight thousand dollars.
See, and I'm thinking if we got five percent. On 1.5 million with the others staying. Frozen, we're talking seventy five thousand dollars. I mean, that would be a big boost to the library. And that's just a five percent, which is real conservative because everybody else got a lot more this last year.
Well, in in also in the past, when we've had this discussion, the foundation was very new. And they weren't, you know, even ready to raise money. We can't forget that we've got two organizations as well as ours that's all about raising money for the library. And I think that we all need to, you know, raise money in the right direction is what I I I think has to happen here. But I think that in the past, a lot of the fear that I felt from fellow trustees was, oh, my gosh. We can't spend this money. You know, we just can't, but yet we're not making any money. I think we make money to spend, right? That's that's that would be the beauty of of doing this. By the way, I I'm a firm believer. This goes to just my years of working in foundations and friends at the American Library Association. And and being a librarian is that people gave this money to the library to be used. They did not give this money for it to sit in a CD somewhere and make one percent. You know, we've all given money to organizations. You didn't give it to them to sit on it. You gave it to them because you wanted them to buy a book, buy do something with it to help the library. So I think that we have to, we have to balance that and that we've got to. Let's make some money, let's let's, of course, be stewards. But also, you know, let's see this money, you know, make things happen for the library. And I think that that's for me at a minimum of the discussion with the city, I won't be happy or walk away. Until we are at least involved in how the money is invested. And how the money is managed, even if we can't take a dime from the city coffers. I think at a minimal, we need to be much more involved in what happens there. As citizens asked to be on this group. And seeing the money that's going to start coming our way to to do something for the library, I think that's our obligation. At a minimum.
I agree.
Yeah. I'm I'm really so thankful. And by the way. Trustee Kelly, you should know that your name did come up in the measure day by Linda Futterer. She mentioned that. You know, that the library. Has been doing an outstanding job of of managing their money and the trust fund and and that the other organizations, you know, are raising money for this project. So that's even more why they're interested in what are we going to do? To match the money that measure Jay wants to send our way to. So I think that we've just, we've accomplished a lot. In the last few months and getting our minds about what we have to do next. Jenny, you look like you've got a thought or something.
No, I'm good.
So any other thoughts?
Just thinking, maybe the next meeting, we review the. Example proposals. And maybe spend maybe a half hour just looking at those and seeing how we could revise it so it kind of meets our needs. The other boards that I'm on, the boards are very large, and so they have a finance committee and an investment committee. A subgroup. We're not in that situation. We have five members here, so really, we can't share a lot of responsibility. We have to do all the responsibility.
But you know, I think we all should learn from this process, right? As we develop this and once we get to the other side of it, whatever the other side might look like. I think it could be up to us that if we want to say, okay, we want to have a finance committee of two people. That are going to be responsible for this, you know, we might want to divvy up or maybe not, because the way I I look at it, this really is our sole responsibility and our charge. So this may be what we do every month as we we look at this. And it's our responsibility to get into what's going on. And and not have some other group do that and bring it back. We won't know till we get there, right?
So let's get there.
Yeah, so the question also before us, everyone is, and we we we've talked about it now for the last couple of meetings. Our treasurer is is leaving us. I hope he's here for one more meeting. But we've got to find a treasurer, so. We need to find someone who's interested in taking this on and. If so, I maybe reach out to me and we can talk about it and and be prepared to appoint someone. I don't know if you guys saw this or not, but there 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 was a. An article in the Desert Sun a few weeks ago where the the library board was in the list of city departments looking for. Volunteers to serve on the the boards and commissions, so I know. That they are actively looking and I think they're conducting interviews, what, this month or next month, Jeannie?
There's scheduling for this month.
Okay.
So deadline to apply is coming up very soon.
Now, Ed, you sit in on those interviews, correct?
I have in the past. I I I think they're a little bit different now because in the past, they used to have a meeting with two city council members who are the liaisons. And the and the president and they would do it and well, most of you went through the process, you know, one even to the process where we met in a conference room. Now that they're virtual, it's my understanding that more people are involved. So they, I think they redefine how they're going about doing this now, so. I I haven't heard yet to answer your question.
I was just going to say that they, the last ones that they did, they put them, the the entire city council was on there and representatives from the board. And it was on YouTube, so. Watch the videos.
Showtime.
This happens after June fifteenth. Won't they go back to the old process?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure what they'll do.
I I read today where some some citizens are asking that this virtual meeting process continue. Because it's allowed more people to participate, so we can very well see that. And I know Rotary, we're going to have our regular in-person meetings, but we're also going to have everything on Zoom. That so that people can join us for a while at least, because some people still aren't quite comfortable going out and. Being in close proximity in groups. So they they may, and I think they were asking some of the cities around the valley if they were going to continue that and some are, so.
I think we we've heard that that this might be a hybrid.
Yeah. A while.
Right. And I know if they do open it up June fifteenth, then our June meeting would still be a virtual meeting for sure because. It's before G of fifty.
Right.
Well, I I'm concerned if they have a lot of people involved in this and you're our only representative, then we're going to be underrepresented. And I think your input is going to be. Distinguish, which concerns me because I think your input is going to be important to add the fifth member onto this committee.
So I wanted to report the deadline. The deadline to apply is May tenth. So he's interested in joining the board. Apply by May tenth. It's on this website.
So in the past, Craig, what would happen is they would identify those that have expressed interest in the library and they would reach out to Jeannie and say. We have this many people and they will start setting up the meeting. So we'll know about the process here probably pretty soon if we had applicants. Of course, I will let you guys, excuse me, know what that what that process will be.
Right.
Now, Jeannie, do we have anyone that's up for reappointment?
Melissa Cronin.
Okay.
Yes.
So some, of course, Melissa would be in that group to go through the process as well for reappointment. And she's re for reappointment because she filled a vacant position, right?
Right. Kathy Warmix position.
What I thought.
Does that sound right?
It sounds right. Okay, so. Jeannie, for the next agenda, we'll have the two examples of investment policies. And those will be on our discussion along with. Discussion on next steps and how we want to approach the city and start having discussions with them. About how our money is invested and. Start exploring the options with them. While we're getting ourselves organized and ready to, you know, take on more involvement in the process, so. At the next meeting, we'll. We'll we'll do that, and I think that having that those policies will probably naturally generate questions for all of us so that we can bring to the group and say. I just read where, you know, I might be responsible to do something and what does that mean, you know, or how will we do that? So I think it'll be a good time for us to kind of start answering those questions for ourselves. Okay.
David, next meeting is June second. How does that look for you?
Well, I don't have a class on that day, so it's looking pretty okay.
Good.
Anything else on this topic? All right, guys, thank you. Our next topic, me again. So you would think that four people could come together very easily, but wrong. We, as soon as I left this last meeting, I started working on this and of course, Jeannie. Had a much deserved vacation, so she was gone. And of course, Nancy and David both are so, especially David, he's so active with his real estate business that. And you all know that it's just crazy for him to even settle for a few minutes. And likewise, Nancy, of course, with her job. So I had a date nailed down for this for Monday. And David, at the last minute, had something and he couldn't make it. So I I will tell you that. And 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 thinking this through in retrospect, and and of course, you guys can totally disagree with me at this point, but. What I in in talking to Jeannie when she got back from vacation and giving her an update on what's been going on. I really do think that we need to give her some time to. Find out what the new fiscal year budget is going to look like, what her needs are going to be most for short term, being next year. And have some conversations with her new boss about some long-term goals. And then be prepared to share with all the groups that, you know, here's here's my priorities for short term, long term. And here's what I expect from each of you to help us get there. So having a meeting right now might be just a little too premature because. We could definitely talk about, you know, liking each other and some of the things we need to do and what's been current in everyone's organization, but I feel. We all already established communication with one another, so we kind of know what's going on in each group. What we don't know is what. What we don't know is what the city may be about to hand down to Jenny and um what changes might occur from her new boss and from a new direction. And now that we know about Measure J, I I just think we we have some holes to fill in so that when we do call come together, especially it will be a public meeting because we'll all be there. I want to make sure that we have something worthwhile to discuss. And I think that the that would be Jenny saying, guess what? We're going to have ten million dollars over the next four years. We need to start planning for a new building. That's one of our priorities or, you know, short term, the budget has kicked this, the the budgets. So our budget is so down when on books and special collections, we need that, you know, so we don't know what's what she needs. And I don't think she knows unless she's had a uh a visualization over the last few days. Um, so I'm I'd like to postpone that uh coming together. Um, maybe for later, I think it definitely needs to occur before she goes before Measure J. So I I'm not saying this is going to be postponed for any time other than maybe a couple of months at the max. Um, but let's let her get some more information so that we can all kind of be prepared. And I, unless one of you can bring these people together and have the power that I didn't have, I'm I I throw my hands to the good Lord, as my grandmother's used to say. I don't know, I I tried to pull people together. I can't say how many times. Um, and it it just wasn't working. So I think that was a sign.
Are you thinking September?
I think it has to be before September because she could be called before Measure J in September. So I think at the latest, it would have to be August.
I was just going to make a suggestion because Measure J meets the third week in the month and you meet first week in the month. So we could actually meet in
Maybe we could. You know, maybe we said that now. We said that that first meeting in September is our joint meeting with all the groups where we discuss the uh short term and long term uh goals of the library. I like that idea, Jenny, that that might work even better. And that gives us time to come together and plan the agenda and talk about the topics.
I I know the friends um go dark in July and August, so they would appreciate that.
Well, and we're not, but we're not talking about the entire group. We're talking about the board at a minimum. And if if Nancy wants to come and bring two or three officers, that's okay, too. She doesn't have to bring the entire board. That's really up to her as it is with David, right?
Oh, I, yeah, I thought you meant like uh all the board, all three boards coming together.
Right. I I'm saying that would be in September. Our preliminary meeting, I think, needs to be a planning meeting so that we know what we're going to talk about and and kind of hear from you so that we're all in the same, you know.
That makes sense. That 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 makes sense.
Yeah, um. And then, as we discussed last time, because it's going to be all of us, it is a public meeting. So we know that. Um, but the other organizations can bring either all their board, a part of the board. I don't think we need to, you know, require them to do anything that they don't want to do. But uh, at least their executive boards could come and represent them. Make sense? Any thoughts about that or reactions or? Anybody want to give it a try?
Are they going to have a quorum issues uh if bring their executive board?
They're um, they're private.
I don't think so.
So they don't
We would have
they don't have Brown Act. They they don't have, they're not restricted in that way.
That's why I'm saying, let's let, let's let them make that decision. Let's invite them, uh, their executive board. And and if others want to join, it's it's a public meeting. Anyone can come, by the way. So
And at September one? Jenny, would that be right?
Right.
And I would say, let me, let me go back to Nancy and David. And of course, Jenny, and say between now and the middle of August, is there a date? Well, I also had the middle of June, that we can all come together for a planning meeting um and start that process. Well, maybe July, because that gives you time, Jenny. I keep getting you, you need some time to kind of think about it, too, right? So
Yeah.
Have you had?
You know, the city uh approves their budget in June, so and
Okay.
and we'll know more about our budget. And I have um had an opportunity to meet with the city manager and talk about some of this stuff, too.
Good. Uh, probably July is when we'd have that planning meeting to prepare for the meeting and so uh and later on. Because I don't know what might come from that planning meeting. We might uncover something that we need to go off and do a little workaround or work on, you know, or maybe each organization might want to take it back to their their organizations and say, here, we're hearing from Jenny that she needs us to play this role or us to do this. Are we all okay with that? You know, I can imagine that that might happen, too, right, Jenny? Don't you think? I just thought about that.
Yeah, sure. It could be any, anything.
Yeah. I don't expect any change in direction for any organization, but it, I'm hoping it's more clarification for all of us, right? So um, but I'm sure they'll want to share that with their groups and make sure everyone's okay with it.
Right.
Thoughts about that, guys?
I'm good with that.
Sorry, I failed on that one. Um, but I think I think we'll be okay. All right, moving along. Um, any trustees, staff comments, future agenda items? We just discussed a future agenda item and we're going to have some policy, sample policies going out for future agenda items. Does anybody have anything else?
The Friends Committee uh meets on the second Tuesday of every month?
Yes, at two P M.
Okay, and um, David, are you going to be able to attend the next couple of meetings? Because I'm going to be out of the country for one and I've got a doctor's appointment for the other.
I'll do my best.
Okay. And then I'm good after that.
If um, if if you guys find, you know, no one can make it, reach out to to me and I'll see if uh one either or Melissa or I are in a position to at least have a representation there. So, because things happen.
I'll send everybody to invite. Um, so you can have the Zoom meeting information.
Because basically, we we do we do a report? I haven't been to one of those in quite some time. Do we do a report to the friends or we're just there to listen to what they have to say?
I I usually have something to report about whatever's been going on in uh in uh in our committee meetings, so.
Yeah. Are you, David, are you on the agenda?
Uh, usually uh Nancy calls on me pretty early in the meeting.
Yeah, there is an agenda item for the trustee representative to to give an update. Um, and this may be their last Zoom meeting if we get, or maybe not, you know, they're very eager to meet in person.
Okay. Let us know, guys, if something comes up and we need to need to back up. And I'm sorry, when you said you were saying something?
I just wanted to ask for a little help. Um, once we get the the information, this the sample information from Jenny. Is there anyone I can call if I have maybe a question of what I'm reading, just so that I'm better prepared at the meeting and I'm not asking questions?
True. If you want to. If you want to, why don't you start with me? And then if it's something that, you know, I I can either go get resources from the foundation or I'll go to Craig and see if Craig has something, or if it's something that ties back to our discussion so far from trustee Kelly. And I'm I'm I know you can talk to him as well, so.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I I appreciate that. And now that it's going to be very foreign to me and I just want to know that I have somebody maybe who can, you know, answer some questions.
Yeah, I'll have you figure it out and and we'll find the right source.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Anything else, guys?
Is somebody going to bring it to Melissa that while she wasn't here, we put on a number of committees?
Yeah, Mayor Treasurer. I'll I'll reach out to her and um, once the minutes go out and see if she has any questions or anything so that she's prepared as well, so.
That is nice, too. These are recorded input on YouTube, so you can always back them. How much do you?
All right, guys. Uh, once again, great meeting. And I'm sorry, I we that we ate it up your Cinco de Mayo, but it's not too late, right? It's just not quite seven o'clock, so.
No time for margarita.
One time for at least one. Um, okay, if there's nothing else, then we'll uh adjourn the meeting of the trustees. And the time I have on my computer says it's six fifty-three.